It is my honor to welcome you tonight to our annual holiday celebration. I'd like to begin by recognizing our board members. Please hold your applause. Our board president from District 13, Ms. Robin Mullet. Board vice president from District 3, Mr. Mike Durman. District 1, Mr. Neil Henigan. District 2, Ms. Beth Heitz. District 4, Mr. Jack Lupe. District 5, Mr. Charles Harold. District 6, Mr. Michael Nation. District 7, Mr. Willie Jeter. District 10, Mr. Ron Betancourt. District 11, Mr. Bob Womack. District 12, Mr. Ricky Hershey Jr. District 14, Mr. Dennis Cuzan. Please also help me welcome Superintendent, Mr. Trey Fols. Associate Superintendent, Mr. Peter Jabia. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Regina Sanford. And Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mike Cosay. We are pleased to have everyone here tonight to join us in celebrating the joy and peace of the holidays. For your entertainment this evening, adding to the magic of the season, we have the very talented choir and small vocal ensemble from Slidell High School performing. They are under the direction of vocal music teacher, Ms. Melanie Saint-Sière, and they will be accompanied tonight by the talented music teacher, Mr. John Giraud. Without any further ado...
Good evening again. We're so excited to be back here to perform for you guys. And we're gonna start like we always do with the traditional wassail song. Here we come, awassaling among the leaves so green. Here we come, awandering so fair till we see. Love and joy come to you and to you, wassail too. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. We are not daily beggars that beg from door to door. But we, our lords and ladies, come from a distant shore. Love and joy go to you and to you, wassail too. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. Bring us out a table and spread it with a cloth. Bring us out a fine rate sheets and some of your Christmas love. Love and joy go to you and to you, wassail too. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. God bless the master of this house likewise the mistress too. And all the other guests who lies that's round the table go. Love and joy go to you and to you, wassail too. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. Thank you. Next up, we're gonna have our women's choir do a really old traditional hymn, "Lo How a Rose Aire Blooming", featuring soloist Senior Maddie Estes. Oh, how rose air blooming! From tangerines and aspens. Oh, just as they giech on me! As when a hound has saw. It came of flower price. Obede the cold and winter. When hath gone was the night. Isaiah twice more told it. The rose I have in mind. With every we behold it. Thou virgin, mother kind. To show God's love a right. She bore to man a savior. When hath gone was the night. Through the stars was there an center. And sweetness was in the air. Dispells with glorious splendor. All darkness everywhere. Children yet very good. From sin and death he saves us. And lighteth every light. Oh, how rose air blooming! Thank you. Next up, we're gonna switch gears a little bit and have our small vocal ensemble ladies come out. And they're singing "Man with the Bag", "Santa Baby". Oh, Mister Cringle, the sukkah and chinko. The bells that will sing the holy troubles away. Everybody's waiting for the man with the bag of... Christmas is coming again. He's got a stable, it's not got a staple. He's got stuff to drop on every step of the way. Everybody's waiting for the man with the bag of... Christmas is here again. He'll be here. With the end of two pair that you pray he'll be. Will that's yours. If you've got everything you should. Such a special good deal. May this December, the one you'll remember. The best and the merriest you will ever have. Everybody's waiting for the man with the bag of... Christmas is here again. Santa baby, just let my stable under the tree for me. Been an awful good girl, Santa baby. So hurry down the chimney tonight. Think of all the fun I've missed. Think of all the fabulous presents I haven't kissed. Best dear, I believe, as good. If you've got my Christmas list. Santa baby, I want a yacht and crinny that's not a lot. Been an angel all year, Santa baby. So hurry down the chimney tonight. He'll be here, he'll be here. With the end of two pair that you pray he'll be. Will that's yours, if you've got everything you should. Such a special good deal. Such a special good deal. May this December, the one you'll remember. The best and the merriest you will ever have. Everybody's waiting for the man with the bag of... Christmas is here again. Christmas is here again. Christmas is here again. Thank you. Our next small vocal ensemble piece is "Please Come Home for Christmas", featuring two soloists, Senior Kaylee Pichon, who's also Slidell High Student of the Year, and Senior Savannah Owens.
Bells will be ringing, the sad, sad news. Oh, what a Christmas to have the blues. My baby's gone and I have no friends to wish me greetings once again. Claws will be singing, starry night. Christmas carols by candlelight. Please come home for Christmas. Please come home for Christmas. If not by Christmas, by New Year's night.
Friendsmile invitations, sweet salutations. Sure as the stars shine above. But this is Christmas. Christmas, my dear, are here. The time of year. Be with you, my love. So won't you tell me? You'll never more know. Christmas and New Year.
We'll find you home.
We'll find you home. There'll be no more sorrow. No grief and no pain. And we'll be happy once again. Oh, 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 oh. Baby, please come home. There'll be no more sorrow. No grief and no pain, no pain. And we'll be happy once again. There'll be no more sorrow. No grief and no pain, no pain. And we'll be happy once again. Please come home for Christmas.
Thank you. Our small vocal ensemble has one more song, "Believe", from the Polar Express, which has become one of our favorites. We also are featuring three soloists, three seniors, Joyla Jenkins, Claire Hudson, and Allison Lott.
Snow is softly falling. Dreams are calling. Like bells in the distance.
We were dreamers, not so long ago. But one by one we. All had to grow up. And it seems the magic slipped away. We find it all again on Christmas Day. Believe in what your heart is saying. Hear the melody explain. There's no time to waste. There's so much to celebrate. Believe in what you feel inside. And give your dreams a reason to grow. You are everything you are. And you'll just believe.
Trains move quickly to the journey's end. Destinations are where we begin again.
Ships go sailing far across the sea. Trusting starlight to get where they need to be.
Crazy since we have lost our way. We find ourselves again on Christmas Day. Believe in what your heart is saying. Hear the melody explain. There's no time to waste. There's so much to celebrate. Believe in what you feel inside. And give your dreams a reason to grow. You are everything you are. And you'll just believe. And you'll just believe. And you'll just believe. And you'll just believe. Just believe. Just believe.
Thank you. We're gonna get our big group out here to do just a couple of more songs. Our next song is a song called "Scarborough Carol". It's the words to "Away in a Manger", set to the tune of Scarborough Fair. This one features a sophomore soloist, Billy Barber.
Away in a manger now quick or a bear. The little Lord Jesus they chant with sweet chant. The stars in the sky look to me there. The little Lord Jesus is still on the air.
Why can I give him, poor as I am? If I were a shepherd, I would bring him a loo. And if I were a wise man, I'd do my part. Yet why can I give him? Give him? I'll give him my heart. Why can I give him, poor as I am? If I were a shepherd, I would bring him a loo. And if I were a wise man, I'd do my part. Yet why can I give him? Give him? I'll give him my heart.
Thank you. We have two more songs. Our next one is "Amid the Falling Snow", featuring soloist Senior Allison Lott.
How I remember sleepless nights. When we would read by candlelight. And on the windowpane outside. A new world made of snow.
A million feathers falling down. A million stars that touch the ground. So many secrets to be found. Amid the falling snow. Maybe I am falling down. Tell me, should I touch the ground? Maybe I won't make a sound. In the darkness all around. The silence of a bird's heart. Beats a little of birds I've heard in the night. Remember the rain of the night. The call of others' heart. Maybe I am falling down. Tell me, should I touch the ground? Maybe I won't make a sound. In the darkness all around. All around. I close the window on my heart. I'm in the sun, it's hard. And all is lit by candlelight. Amid the falling snow.
And all is lit by candlelight.
Amid the falling...
Thank you. And this is our final song. And we will end as we always do at Slidell High with "The Hallelujah Chorus", from Handel's "Messiah".
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. 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 Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. For the Lord God who makes and creates. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. For the Lord God who makes and creates. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. For the Lord God who makes and creates. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, the Lord God who makes and creates.
The kingdom of this world. Who is become. The kingdom of our Lord. And of his Christ. And of his Christ.
And he shall reign forever and ever.
And he shall reign forever and ever. And he shall reign forever and ever. And he shall reign forever and ever. King of kings. And lord of lords. King of kings. And lord of lords. King of kings. And lord of lords.
King of kings. And lord of lords. And he shall reign. And he shall reign. And he shall reign forever and ever.
King of kings. Forever and ever. And lord of lords. Hallelujah, hallelujah. And he shall reign forever, forever and ever.
King of kings and lord of lords. King of kings and lord of lords. And he shall reign forever and ever. Forever and ever. Forever and ever. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Wow, how absolutely amazing. Thank you for sharing your talents with us tonight. And we are all very happy to say we were able to experience a little bit of that falling snow last week. So we thank you for bringing those memories back to us. Thank you, Ms. Saint-Sière, for the work you do with our students. Thank you to the Small Women's Ensemble and to the Small Honor Choir. How fabulous. And thank you for the talented music teacher, Mr. Juroe, for accompanying them tonight. So it was fabulous, fabulous. I also would like to thank Ms. Pat Ferris, Supervisor of Food Services, and her staff for the beautiful and, I'm sure, tasty snowman cookies tonight for our guests. And on a final note, students, please stay because I'm certain... Raise your hand if you're a senior. Okay. In May of 2018, you will have in common something with Mr. Superintendent Fols. You will all be graduates of Slade High School. And then the rest of y'all, a couple of years later. If y'all will please stay so Mr. Fols can get a picture with y'all with his... As a proud graduate of Slade High School. Thank you all again for being here tonight and celebrating with us. That concludes our entertainment. Please enjoy some refreshments before the board meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for our school board meeting for December 14th, 2017. Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Mullet?
Present.
Mr. Henigan?
Here.
Mrs. Heinz? Mr. Durman?
Here.
Mr. Loop?
Here.
Mr. Harold?
Here.
Mr. Nation?
Here.
Mr. Jeter?
Here.
Mrs. Seeley?
Present.
Mrs. Drucker?
Here.
Mr. Bentoncourt?
Presently here.
Mr. Womack?
Here.
Mr. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Kuzan?
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario?
Thank you, Mrs. Coakley. Would everyone please rise and join me as Mrs. Seeley leads us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Seeley.
Thank you. Lord, we thank you so much for allowing us all to be here together. And we ask God that you guide us through the next year to come and that you bless everyone through the holidays and keep them all protected. And we ask this in your name. Thank you.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Seeley. Okay. It looks like we have no one to speak for five minutes. And I believe that no one signed up as well for three minutes. So we are going to move... We are moving on to the agenda items. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting held December 14th, 2017. Do we have a motion?
I move.
We have a motion by Mrs. Seeley. We have a second by Mr. Kuzan. Would everyone please vote machines? Mr. Kuzan? There you go. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December... Excuse me, November 16th, 2017. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have one from Mr. Hershey, seconded by Mrs. Drucker. Any comments from board members? Comments from the public? Could we vote by machine? Perfect, motion carries. Okay. We have appropriate retirement resolution for the following certificated personnel subsequent to November 16th, 2017. Mr. Jabia, do you have that list for us?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Yes, I do. Jessica D. Chandler, Bayou Woods Elementary, 20.42 years, 11.35 years in St. Tammany Parish. Alan R. Bennett, Clearwood Junior High, 47.50 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Deborah A. Adams, Covington High, 30.05 years, 24.09 years in St. Tammany Parish. Kenneth O. Beasley, Cypress Cove Elementary, 34 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Paulette Perrin, Educational Center, 34.97 years, 28.58 years in St. Tammany Parish.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Heinz, seconded by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any questions? Mr. Bentoncourt?
Thank you, President Mullet. Mr. Jabia, did Mr. Bennett have you beat 47 and 1/2? Or are you still on top of that?
I don't know if you call it on top of it or below it or what, but I got a couple of more years than that.
Couple more than that?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, if we could vote on that, please? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Appropriate retirement resolution for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to November 16th, 2017. Mr. Jabia?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Joan O. Kaznav, Abney Elementary, 30.90 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Linda M. Walker, Clearwood Junior High, 24.54 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Judy T. Dale, Covington High, 18.37 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Kim S. White, Slade Junior High, 25.18 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Kathy M. Spadoni, Slade Annex, 27.21 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Reginald G. Davis, Slade Maintenance, 25.22 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Albert R. Holly, Slade Maintenance, 33.25 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Joseph S. Caserta, Transportation Center, 21.41 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Deidra N. Larison, Transportation Center, 21.22 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Christian M. Stuckey, Transportation Center, 11.12 years, all in St. Tammany Parish.
I move.
Okay. Mr. Womack? Womack made that motion, seconded by Mrs. Seeley. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, would you please vote? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Jabia, for that report.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Next is approval of the recommendation from the committee as a whole meeting for human resources education held December 12th. Mrs. Heinz?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. We did meet on Tuesday evening of this week. And we want to recommend the approval of the Accountability Resolution. You may recall that this was a resolution that our work group gathered and composed. And I'd like Mr. Loop to read that resolution before we vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board believes all students should be encouraged to be successful in academics and motivated to continuously push towards higher achievements. And whereas there has been much continuing discussion and concern between the Louisiana Department of Education, Vessie members, school board members, school system superintendents, educators, parents, and stakeholder groups regarding Louisiana's as a proposal, and especially the plan's accountability formula. Whereas the St. Tammany School Board members believe the new accountability changes, which will be used in the 2018-19 school year, will not accurately reflect the instructional adjustments educators across the district and the state have been implementing to align with Louisiana standards. Whereas St. Tammany School Board members have been briefed on the new accountability formula, which will create lower school and district performance scores, there still exists a major concern about the lack of communication from the State Department of Education to the public regarding these changes. Whereas St. Tammany School Board members believe the new accountability changes could potentially cause harm to students, schools, parents, and communities. Whereas the state's plan to enact these new accountability changes will have a major impact on school and district letter grades statewide. And St. Tammany School Board members believe this will have a negative impact on how Louisiana communities view their local public schools. Now therefore be resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board ask state education leaders to reconsider and rescind the changes recently made to the accountability formula. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon official minutes of this board with copies being sent to Louisiana Governor John Bell Edwards, Louisiana legislators, Vessie members, State Superintendent John White, LSBA, and members of the Accountability Commission. I so move.
Unanimous second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Loop and a unanimous second. Absolutely. Do we have any comments from board members regarding this resolution?
Well, I do have one comment. I'm very proud of this resolution. I'm proud of the work group that put this resolution together along with Dr. Sanford and Meredith Mendez. I do believe that we're a leader in this state, as our school board is. And it's our job to voice our concerns when we see that there is concern. And we have voiced that. And I just hope and pray that the state, the governor, and our state superintendent will truly turn and just look at some of the issues that we have instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater each and every time. That's my comment. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, if we could please vote?
Mr. Womack? Do you want to vote? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Heinz, is that all tonight? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next is the approval of the recommendations from the Committee as a Whole meeting for Business Affairs Administrative held December 12th. Mr....December 12th? Mr. Nation? December 7th on there. Mr. Nation?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two recommendations for the board tonight. First is to recommend acceptance of the low-based bid submitted by Sun Industries LLC in the amount of $299,000.00 for the football stadium lighting replacement at Pearl River High School, STPSB project number P0160.
I move and we accept this. Okay, I have a motion to move by Mrs. Seeley.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jeter. Do I have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, if we could vote on this? Mr. Kuzan? Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Our second and final recommendation tonight is to accept the recommendation of the architectural firm of Verge. Am I pronouncing that right? Verge is...I didn't know if the S was silent. I couldn't remember. Verge is Rome Architects to provide AE services for STPSB project number P0194 for renovations to Safe Haven Quad D for St. Tammany Parish School Systems Rise Restorative Interventions and Strategies in Education Learning Center. And I so move.
Okay, Mr. Nation made that motion. It was seconded by Mrs. Drucker. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, if you would please vote? Okay, that motion passed.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Nation. Next on the agenda, we have certification of board members. Neil M. Henigan, Beth... Excuse me, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Luke III, Charles T. Harold, Michael C. Nation, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Seeley, Sharon L. Drucker, Ronald Ron Bentoncourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, Richard Ricky Hershey Jr., Robin P. Mullet, and Dennis S. Kuzan in completion of one hour of training for 2017, presented on December 12th, 2017, as mandated by the Louisiana Revised Statute 17:53. Remarks, Mr. Fols?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Do indeed certify that the board members that were just mentioned did indeed complete their training on December 12th.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to have election of board officers. It is a one-year term, effective January 1st, 2018, to December 31st, 2018. So Superintendent Fols, would you take over for that?
Sure. I've been wanting to take over for a while. That's good. Thank you, Ms. Mullet. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the office of School Board President for calendar year 2018.
Fols? I'd like to nominate Robin Mullet for the office of president.
Mr. Womack has nominated Mrs. Mullet for the office of president. Anyone else? Mr. Hershey?
I'd just like to second it.
Doesn't require a second. So thank you. Any other nominations for the office of president? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close nominations by Ms. Heinz. And that does need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeter. Mr. Jordan, since there are no other candidates, do we still need to vote?
Those are him being done. Do act...act...
Okay. With that being said, congratulations and best wishes to Ms. Mullet as president for 2018.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm finished. I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fols. And I appreciate your vote of confidence, everyone. And I'll continue to work my best, to do my best each and every day, not only for all of you, for everyone in the school system, especially for the students. Now, we're going to open the floor for the vice president nomination. Oops, and I had that in the wrong spot, didn't I? So I will open the floor to nominations.
Ms. Mullet, I'd like to nominate Michael Durman for the office of vice president.
Okay. Mr. Womack is nominating Mr. Durman? Okay. Do we have any other nominations for vice president?
I second.
Okay, Mrs. Heinz and Mr. Jeter moved. Okay?
Same thing.
Again, same thing. Okay. Okay, I'm going to move on to open the floor for nominations for chair for the Human Resources and Education Committee as a whole. Chairperson.
Ms. Mullet, I'd like to nominate Beth Heinz.
Okay. Mr. Womack is...Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Heinz, yes.
I'm just...okay.
Yes.
Anyone else have any other nominations? Would anybody like to close nominations? Okay, Mr. Durman makes that motion, closed by Mr. Loop. Okay, nothing further. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, and the last nomination is for Business Affairs and Administrative Committee as a whole chairperson. And we need a nomination.
Finally, Ms. Mullet, I'd like to nominate Michael Nation. He's done a good job with that position. Proud of him.
Okay, we have Michael Nation. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Okay, Ms. Drucker. Okay, Ms. Drucker made that motion and moved... And I'm going to let Mr. Henigan second that one. Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Nation. Okay. I do have some announcements. I would like to thank the very talented Small Vocal Ensemble Enquirer from Slade High School who performed the holiday music for us in the atrium before the board meeting. It was absolutely beautiful. It was absolutely beautiful. They do a fabulous job each and every year. They were accompanied by their talented music teacher, Mrs., I'm sorry, John Giraud, and they were under the direction of the vocal music teacher, Mrs. Melanie St. Cier, and they did an outstanding job. In closing, I'd like to wish everybody a beautiful and happy Merry Christmas. I'm really proud of this school system. I'm proud of being a part of this team, and that includes all of you that come every Thursday and every Tuesday night, and you're all very supportive, and I'm just very thankful. So have a beautiful, beautiful Christmas holiday. Oh, and we have to come back.
Yeah.
Tuesday. That's right. I don't have that. I didn't have that. Oh, it is somewhere. Okay. Tuesday, we do have expulsion hearings starting at 5:00 p.m., and we do need, we do need a quorum, and then we do have a tenure hearing scheduled for 6:00 p.m., and that is Tuesday the 19th. Okay, everyone else have a great holiday.